There are fighters who are with us this evening. Councilor Berman, is there a motion to suspend the rules this evening and move Action Item A?
Yes, Madam Mayor, in recognition of the audience here waiting for a particular action item, I would like to make a motion to suspend our normal rules and order such that Action Item A, confirmation of the city administrator's appointment of the Saco fire chief, be moved prior to the workshop.
Motion has been made by Councilor Berman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Councilor Hatch. Any discussion on moving the item this evening? Okay, roll call vote. Councilor Archer.
Aye.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Councilor Gunn.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt.
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion to move Action Item A to the beginning of the meeting this evening passes 7-0. And that motion is, Councilor Archer.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I am pleased to recommend Deputy Fire Chief David Hamel for the position of Saco's next fire chief, following Fire Chief Duross's retirement plan for November 1st, 2024. David's extensive educational background, which includes an Associate's of Paramedicine, a Bachelor's of Fire Administration, and current enrollment in the National Fire Academy's Executive Fire Officer Program makes him exceptionally well qualified for this role. Beyond his education, David has dedicated the last 21 years to serving the City of Saco's Fire Department, advancing from firefighter EMS provider to his current position as Deputy Fire Chief. His commitment to professional growth and their excellence is evidenced not only in his personal achievements, but also in his efforts to elevate his colleagues and the department. In the past, as Deputy Fire Chief, David has spearheaded several key initiatives, including development and implementation of a comprehensive field training officer program and securing significant grant funding to support his departmental training for emergency medical services. His collaborative efforts with H Friendly Saco to enhance safety and promote healthy living among our senior citizens further demonstrates his dedication to our community. David Hamel's experience, dedication, and forward-thinking approach make him the ideal candidate to lead the Saco Fire Department into the future. I strongly recommend his appointment as the new fire chief. Be it ordered, the City Council confirmed the city administrator's appointment of David Hamel as fire chief for the City of Saco effective November 1st, 2024. I move to approve the order.
Second.
Motion has been made by Councilor Archer, second by Councilor Johnston. Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote. I'm sorry, Councilor Hatch.
Yes, I just, thank you, Mayor McPhail. I just wanted to make a comment. David, I've told you this personally, but I'm going to say it publicly. I can't imagine we would have had a better candidate for the position. I've had a chance to interact with you through my Rotary Club, and I've seen you work with H Friendly Saco. Your reputation is stellar with the community, and I just wanted to publicly congratulate you on this appointment.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, roll call vote. Councilor Archer.
Aye.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Councilor Gunn.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt.
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Okay, at this time, we're going to take a two-minute quick recess before we start the workshop items. I'd like to invite Council and Chief Hamel out to the front lobby for a quick photograph. And for all of the firefighters in attendance, if you would like to head downstairs, there will be an opportunity for a photo down there as well. Thank you, everyone, for that. So, to start the evening off, we do have two small workshop items, and the first being is the Conservation Commission Joint Workshop. I'd like to invite the members of the Conservation Commission, as well as Director Prescott. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for being here. Emily, would you like to start off?
Yes. Just getting set up here. So, while Shannon hands paper copies out of our presentation so you can follow along with paper in front of you, I just want to thank the Council for taking the time to meet with the Conservation Commission members in this joint workshop, give an overview of the great work that they've been doing, and that they've been asking the Planning Department to work on with them since I started back here in January 2023. So, why don't we do a quick round of introductions from our Conservation Commissioners? Can we go ahead and start over here with Hope? And Hope, if you want to, as the chair, if you want to just lead it off and make sure everyone gets introduced, that would be great.
All right. Yeah, so my name is Matt Hokinson. Most people call me Hope, and I'm the Chair of the Commission, current Chair.
All Christian. I live in Hillview Heights, and I'm a new member last couple of months.
My name is Madeline Clark. I go by Maddie, and I'm from Ward 1.
I'm Kurt Scannan. I live at 2 Sard Farm Lane and recently appointed.
I'm Melissa Field, and I've been on the Commission since 2018, I think, and I live on Ward 1.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ward 5.
I'm Justin Hill. I live at 108 Bradley Street, and I've been on the Commission for the last two years.
And then I'll ask Shannon to introduce herself.
Yes, hello. My name is Shannon Chisholm. Some of you already know me. I am the Assistant City Planner, but also the Staff Liaison to the Conservation Commission.
So, thank you. The first item that we wanted to review tonight was a concept that we've been looking at called a Conservation Cluster Subdivision Concept. I do know that Saco hasn't always had the best history with the term Cluster Subdivision, so if you'll just bear with us and you can kind of see where the Conservation Commission themselves were coming from, we can kind of vet out more of the details as we move further into the review, but this is really to look at the high-level concept and why we're looking at this overall. And then we'll give you just a brief overview of the other ongoing projects. The Commission's been very busy, so we're very happy to have all of our volunteers here tonight. I'll hand it off to Shannon to go over some of the comprehensive plan goals.
All right, thank you. So, the Conservation Commission has been working really hard to address the goals in which they are either the lead or support within our comprehensive plan. Some of the goals I have listed on this slide specifically because the ongoing projects or the Conservation Cluster Subdivision Concept seeks to address them. So, the first one being allowing conservation subdivision zoning or other appropriate economically viable uses in the rural conservation and West Residential Districts to protect open space and natural resources. So, that one very specifically leans towards the draft that we are currently working on. The second one is create a Parks Open Space and Trails Master Plan to identify different resources and a future goals. And the next three are things that the Conservation Cluster Subdivision Concept may also help to address, including extending trail networks, protecting open space or recreational lands, and also protecting critical natural resources. But we'll get into how this concept would achieve those goals in the next couple of slides.
Thank you, Shannon. So, the Conservation Commission during Melissa's leadership actually brought this forward and asked us to look into it from an open space plan perspective, and really wanted to take a lot of, we were going to take some time and resources, and what we did was we wound up looking back at the cluster subdivision we had before, as well as other subdivision ordinances in other communities, such as the Town of Wells, that has an ongoing ordinance similar to this one that we're working on. And we also prepared a review of the spaces in the city that were under some sort of restricted status. So, they either were owned by the State of Maine, they were already a park, they were already under a protected status like the Heath, or they were owned by the Nature Conservancy, or maybe, you know, the US government. So, these were the ways that we kind of vetted out where open spaces were already existing in the city, and we're going to use that as a draft going forward and vetting that a little bit more as part of our open space process. I'm just going to hand it off here, and you can get an overview of the drafting process and what the Conservation Commission looked at from a very high level.
Yes. So, I have been the Staff Liaison for the Conservation Commission since June of 2022, and back then, we were talking about the Conservation Cluster Subdivisions and open space plans. So, there was a lot of research that was done by different Commission members about what that looks like, how you get it started, and how it could be a useful tool for the city. Then, in early 2024, a subcommittee was actually formed specifically to begin the drafting of the Conservation Cluster Subdivision, the first draft of which was reviewed during the March 2024 meeting. Then, the summer of 2024, we had several other meetings. In fact, we had three more meetings for edits to the draft and discussion around the draft. And officially, on August 7th, 2024, we got to a point where there was consensus among the Commission about, you know, the draft is at least polished up enough that we believe that we can bring it to the City Council for our joint meeting. And before tonight, the staff got together to do a tabletop exercise and vet the draft. And we were able to come up with a couple more comments to look into for further edits down the road.
So, some of the goals here that you'll see and the reasons why we undertook this were to preserve more open space. It could help combat sprawl if these developments are done correctly. We could provide a little bit more density, but also get more land with full habitat blocks preserved in certain areas. And then, it could potentially reduce impervious surfaces. So, the theory is that people live closer together, similar to a planned unit development, and less impact to the land if there's larger parcels of land. So, Shannon is going to show you a picture here now.
So, this is probably, this is a good example of traditional development on one side and Conservation Cluster Development on the other. So, traditional development often has longer road frontages, more utilities, larger areas that are owned privately. And Conservation Cluster Subdivisions, such as the image on the right, would preserve, in theory, or the hope is, that it would preserve more contiguous natural blocks. So, in the second photo, you can see out back how many more trees are preserved, rather than being turned into either lawn or roadway.
And this also is impacting or implementing some LID principles into this. The previous one we had didn't quite do that to the level that we would be looking to do something like this with. So, I just want to make sure that's clear as well.
So, obviously, the Conservation Cluster Subdivision would be just one of the tools in the toolbox. So, there is a lot of discussion amongst the Commission on what benefits to the developer would be able to entice developers to use this tool instead of developing in the traditional fashion. So, we talked a lot about bonuses, but at the very beginning, a Conservation Cluster Subdivision would have to designate at least 35% of the entire parcel to be protected in perpetuity before they were able to unlock anything within this ordinance. So, some of the benefits would include reductions in dimensional standards such as street frontage, lot size, setbacks, and the other one would be the bonuses that I will get into further detail with. At this point, everybody here at the table has taken part in creating this draft. So, if anyone would like to provide more context of how we got to where we are, please feel free to jump in.
Yeah. So, the idea of a cluster development, starting at 35%, is kind of the baseline, but the conservation developments tend to be 50% to 70% land preserved. So, that's where you're kind of connecting the two, and by bringing in more of these density bonuses, allowing the numbers to go up, depending upon the appetite that the developer would have for wanting to do that level of conservation and that level of density. So, you'll see the different stages or options, I guess, that we're providing, and that gives a sense of kind of moving in the direction of seeing if we can get it up to 50% and seeing who has an interest in it. Maybe we could get it in the future to go even higher than 50%. But that's sort of the start point.
I'd also say, just for some context, Shannon touched on it in the timeline. In a perfect world, we would have an open space plan, all figured out and perfect. It turns out, that's quite the process. So, we determined that we would work on something like this, a more practical measure in the meantime, as we get the open space plan process underway. So, just some context there.
All right, thank you.
So, we've provided some slides here that go over what we're thinking about for density bonuses. Right now, what we're really looking to do is not get into the weeds on any specific one, but really hear more from the Council about your overall feedback of our continuing to work on this in the direction, general direction that we're going in, knowing that these density bonuses will probably change as we continue to vet with our city staff. But we're basically going to look for allowing reductions in lot sizes where it makes sense, in front yard setbacks, and street frontage requirements. And I know this sounds like we're just reducing everything, but it's going to be based on where the resources are located on the ground. So, it's going to be more of a low-impact development tool rather than just everything gets reduced and we're allowing a lot more homes. You're going to have to prove that you're preserving quite a lot of land in order to be able to get into this type of development. Right now, I do not have any option for developers to preserve more trees. I have a traditional subdivision section, Chapter 188, and so we're seeing traditional rectangular lots and a lot of tree clearing. And so, I don't have any option to offer. We don't have any other options. So, it would be nice to have another option, even if it doesn't wind up looking like exactly what you're seeing in your PowerPoint tonight. And I think that was the Conservation Commission's takeaway as well. So, you'll see some things in here that maybe it's, it's the lot proposed at one time, maybe we get to some of these things are in the draft, and that's probably fine, just as long as we have another tool in the toolkit. And this is also to follow up on some of the conversations we had around tree preservation during the Tree Ordinance Moratorium work that we did as well. So, these reductions will be based on whether the project site is located within growth or non-growth area, as well as whether public utilities are available. Obviously, site constraints would be very much something that we'd have to look at as we review and vet the proposal. And then, we were talking about unlocking the density bonuses. Again, it's based on the value and characteristics of these protected open spaces. And then, we would not allow the density to be exceeded beyond the maximum allowed in the dimensional standards for the applicable zone by more than either 35% or 50%, depending on if you're in a non-growth or growth area. Again, all these percentages can be adjusted. We took them from research that we had done on other towns, other communities, and with the discussion of the Conservation Commission. At some point, though, there does need to be a reason to do this development, so you do need to have some sort of density consideration built in. I'm just going to hand it off to Shannon to kind of very briefly go through these sections. This is going to align with the draft once we provide you all with red lines.
Yes. So, there are a number of different ways to unlock a density bonus using the draft that is currently what we're working with. The first of which is just based on the total percentage of area that you are reserving, or preserving. So, that could range from 50% or 45%. And if you are preserving that much land in perpetuity within areas where you have sewer and public water available, you are able to develop with land in common or in condominium style. So, that would only happen in areas where public utilities were available. And then, when it comes to valuable land, such as agricultural land, timber harvesting land, and areas where valuable wildlife and environmental areas are located, you would also be able to unlock density bonuses in that way. So, if you had a deer-wintering area that you were able to preserve, or a buffered stream area that we were able to preserve more than what is currently required under the ordinance, that would unlock a density bonus. And then, some of the other ones are related to wildlife corridors. So, this kind of leans towards the open space plan that Hope mentioned, where the end goal would be to connect all of these different natural pathways so that animals such as deers, foxes, possums would be able to travel with, between habitat groupings safely. So, you'd be able to unlock a density bonus if you were able to provide a connecting corridor. You would also be able to unlock density if you were able to connect to existing trailways, or if you were willing to create new public access trails through the preserved land. Subdivisions that preserve and incorporate historic structures into their development would also receive a density bonus. And there's also a provision in here for affordable housing for moderate-income buyers, as defined by HUD, which would allow for a unit, for unit density bonus. And all of these things we can get into further detail about when red lines are available, but it's just, it's all of these different ways that we're, that the Conservation Commission is looking to achieve the goals in the comprehensive plan as they are stated. And then, of course, you know, Emily already mentioned this, but there are limits to density bonuses. So, within growth areas, you'd be limited to 50% density bonus, and within non-growth areas, you'd be limited to 35%. And that's only if, to begin with, you were able to stack them on top of each other, and that you were preserving land of high enough value to unlock those bonuses to begin with.
So, we did a lot of work with the Conservation Commission as well. We actually had two consultants come in. We also had the Water Resource Recovery Director, Howard, come in, and we did several meetings where we discussed different sewer and water utility connections and requirements. I will say, originally, the planning staff had recommended that this only be allowed where public sewer is available. And then, we did further vetting with the Conservation Commission. The Commissioners really wanted to make sure it was as available as possible. So, after hearing from a couple of consultants and putting together their drafts, we have brought forward connections to public sewer systems. Obviously, I believe that would be preferred to tap into this, but you could also do individual septic systems, provided you can meet the state minimum lot area size. And we had some conversations about community septic systems. Obviously, if we do go down the community septic system route, staff feels that it would be very important to have extremely rigid and clear guidelines for how these systems are to be maintained in the future. And I don't want to speak for the Commission, but they have also expressed that really- they wanted to make sure everything was available to develop with LID in mind and conservation in mind, in all areas of the community. So, they didn't want to limit a specific area by not offering all options, and that they really wanted it up for council discussion. I'll just defer to the chair there to see if I'm misinterpreting anything. Okay. So, clearly, that's up for discussion when we bring forward the red lines. And if you want to tell us tonight that that's not something that's a go, that's fine, too, but you'll see that potentially in the red lines if you don't tell us otherwise. Next steps here, we, every time we do a pretty big zoning ordinance, or offer something that's going to be a big change, we go to our staff committee. We did vet this with staff. We had a meeting September 4th. We still have to do a little more vetting. Some comments that we received, overall support for density bonuses, providing that you can tap into the initial 35% requirement of preserved open space or preserved land. There was requests to include design standards, especially, we had a lot of conversation about how the streetscape would look, and making sure that whatever we write into the proposal not only considers wildlife, but how you interact with the look of the front of these types of developments. We don't want something to look completely out of place, obviously. There were definitely concerns regarding the community septic systems, but I don't think the commissioners have any surprise by that, because we were very upfront. And then, there's further vetting for unintended consequences that we will continue to do at our next meeting, and then make sure that the red lines reflect these tabletop exercises. What we try to do is, we pull out two developments that could have come forward in a different type of subdivision method. We won't say which developments, because that wouldn't be fair, but if we had this on the books, how could this developer have done, have done something differently with this ordinance in mind? And try to vet it out that way. So, what we're doing next is, after we get your feedback tonight, we will update the drafts. We will also schedule another tabletop exercise with staff. And then, when we're ready, we will bring that draft back to city council for review. We call it red lines, but it's probably going to be pretty new, because it'll be a new section of the ordinance. We have some really cool other ongoing projects here. I'm going to hand it off to Shannon and Hope quickly, just to give you a list of what the Conservation Commission's been up to, because it hasn't just been this.
Yes, so, I think Hope would agree with me. The Conservation Commission has been very busy this year. So, it's been very nice to have a full group, and these are all the irons we currently have in the fire. So, we, as the Conservation Commission, have been working pretty closely with the planning board. The planning board has requested the Conservation Commission provide advisory comments on four development projects within the last eight to nine months or so. And so, that's something that has even required some special Conservation Commission meetings, which everyone has been really great at attending and being flexible with. Another project that is currently ongoing is updating the landscaping standards within the city to include more native plantings. Then, there is a traffic safety campaign, which is a citywide campaign effort through the communications department, that the Conservation Commission is supplementing with some ads that the Thornton Academy students created for us. So, that was great. There's an ongoing rare and special species series, that the Conservation Commission members are writing up different facts about rare and endangered species within Saco, where you might be able to find them, how you might be able to identify them, and just highlighting the beautiful resources that we have here. The No Mo May campaign is going strong. This year, actually, the Conservation Commission partnered with the Dyer Libraries Children Library to put on a drawing competition, so that was really fun. There were prizes given out, including seed kits, and also tickets to the Botanical Gardens up in Booth Bay, which was wonderful. And the Conservation Commission, so far, has attended two different community events, the Sidewalk Art Festival and the National Night Out. And that is a 200% increase from last year, because we have, we have the, what is it? We have the numbers. So, it's really energized us. Hope, if you'd like to add anything, please feel free.
Sure, not up here. We've also been advising the low-impact development process, although that's on hold, so not really on our books at the moment. The No Mo May campaign also had a social media presence as well, which is fun. What else? Yeah, not on this, but what we'd look to be getting into next is the, the open space plan I mentioned before. But again, quite the project, grants involved, et cetera, et cetera. So, hope to gear up on that soon.
Great, thank you so much, everyone. Sounds like a lot of hard work and dedication. I'm happy to see it. Happy to have this presented. And with that, any councilors have any questions or comments? Councilor Berman.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. Thanks, Conservation Commission. Just, as a liaison to the commission, I watch most months, not quite all of them. Your guys' hard work, your dedication, just what an active committee it is. So, I really want to thank you all for your hard work, and just let council know, you guys are always at it, growing, and doing things. In terms of the conservation cluster subdivision, I just want to just reemphasize what a process that has been. And I know some of your frustration, as the planning board asks you to weigh in on projects, has been, you know, what do we do? There's some neighborhood interests, these are unique parcels, there's trees, there's wildlife, but we don't really have tools in our tool shed, other than a letter saying these things are valuable. And it goes to the planning board, and there aren't pieces in the ordinance to allow the protection of those, or the prioritization of those, in the way you might want. And so, some of this is a proposal to address that, so that when the city, or when neighbors, or when developers recognize unique features or valuable land, the city now has a tool to advise and a preservation of that, and still make the project work for developers through these density bonuses. And I want to say that there's been a lot of back and forth in the commission in the meetings I've seen. There's been different opinions, there's been pluses and minuses, there's been experts called in to inform, where there's some disagreements of fact or best practices, that there's been looking at other communities to see what they're doing, and how this plays out in different communities, you know, both in Maine and outside of Maine, and really has led to what I think is a really thoughtful draft of the project, and I'm looking forward to that coming to council. I think some notable additions that I really appreciate are the affordable housing piece. I think that's a really important bonus, that that also serves a high council priority. And just for council's knowledge, I am a big advocate of the community septic. Well, there are some, some things you need to take, you know, into consideration. These can be large septic systems that allow many houses to connect to a, to a single commercial-grade kind of leach field and processing system. It requires regular maintenance and updates. Some benefits are that you don't need the same lot sizes as you would with individual septic systems, which really allows some of those density bonuses to come into play. If you require lot sizes for individual septic systems, it reduces the number of situations in which this can be used. It also, you know, then ends up with a homeowner's association to engage in maintenance, as opposed to many sources of individual failure. Whereas, you know, individual homeowners who fail maintenance, have a septic system that fails, this puts the onus on an HOA, creating hopefully some additional professionalism in maintaining it. But there are some hurdles, that they don't currently occur, you know, in Saco. There would be some things that we need to get right, in order to make sure that it works. And ultimately, just thank you. It's been, as you saw, two years of hard work. It's pretty amazing to be here, and I'm glad you guys are here presenting it.
Councilor Johnson?
Thank you. Likewise, thank you for all you do. I know it's a big-time commitment, and hopefully, it seems as though, you know, you're passionate about, you know, this area. I guess, on the cluster, or conservation cluster subdivisions, we're calling them now, I do think it's a good tool, when used appropriately. As, you know, Ms. Prescott indicated, we did previously have a cluster subdivision portion of the ordinance, I guess, while I can't fully take credit for it, I will say, to be, you know, transparent, I think I kind of spearheaded the lead for removing the prior section of the ordinance, largely not because I didn't support them, but history had shown that they weren't working as intended. I'm interested to see, you know, this draft, and how this is different than the prior ordinance section. I mean, I think it's a tricky topic, because while you're also trying to preserve land, you're also then encouraging growth, which creates sprawl. And that, really, the prior ordinance, almost all that, all those subdivisions were done in the conservation zone, which already, by virtue of its creation, was, the intent was to preserve the land. So, that's where the cheap land is. So, developers would buy up cheap land, and then put a whole bunch of houses on, and not necessarily preserve the best of land. It was pretty much land that wasn't already developable. So, like I said, you know, this is obviously the first time we're hearing it, and I look forward to seeing the actual details of it. And again, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilor Hatch?
Thank you, Madam McPhail. Just want to dovetail to a couple of comments that have already been made. Nice work. Really, it's nice for us to sit up here and actually see a lot of citizen engagement, a lot of hard work, so we appreciate that. I'm the liaison to the planning board, so I will dovetail on Councilor Berman's comment. Creating some synergies between the Conservation Commission and the planning board in sort of an advisory role is excellent. I hope we can continue to foster that moving forward. I just wanted to address, and it's going to dovetail to Councilor Johnson's comment he just made. When we're calculating, and maybe I didn't understand it correctly, so you certainly can correct me. If I'm a developer in pursuit of density bonuses, and I see a range of, you know, 35% to 50% preservation, and the higher it goes, the more density I get, it's just interesting to me, that's, that's an interesting amount of land, 50%, particularly, is pretty, pretty high, at least from a developer's perspective. And the point I want to make here is, when you calculate that bonus, to Councilor Johnson's point, is that calculation made only on the buildable portion of the parcel? So, if I come to you with a 50-acre parcel, and half of it is wetlands, and I can't do anything with it anyway, am I going to be able to use this technique to increase my density on the remaining buildable? Or is that formula only on the buildable portion of the property?
So, we would look at gross to get you into the 35%, but as far as the density, we would be calculating off of net residential. So, you wouldn't wind up with density based on gross. But, to get into this percentage of 35%, you can use the gross area, because there is some, provided there's some value to the wetland that you are looking to put into open space or preserve. And you only tap into the other density bonuses. I mean, you'd have to have a pretty unique parcel to tap into all of the density bonuses on there. So, the density bonuses are usually between 5% and 20%, so they're not as extreme. There's been a lot of percentages tonight, so I just want to make sure that's clear.
Yeah, and it's swirling in my head as well. So, that's, that would be a concern of mine, moving forward on this, and I'll try to keep an eye on it and get better educated, because I don't think, I don't think, at least at this moment, that a developer should get a density bonus on land they cannot build on.
So, it would not be a density bonus on land they cannot build on. It would be that they could only start using this ordinance if they preserve 35% gross total land.
Gross, so if that...
The density bonus would be calculated on the net residential, so the buildable area.
Okay, all right. All right, so that's, that was just a concern I wanted to get out on the table, and I'm sure you'll, you'll address it appropriately. And then, one side note, in my old days as a banker, I actually financed a commercial septic system. There were 10, I believe it was 10, units of housing that were, that had pond frontage, and they, they wanted to develop the land to build housing. So, they, they used a, an HOA to have a common commercial septic system. I'm not an expert on it, but I would tell you that one of the concerns we had, risk factors that we had to underwrite, was the ongoing maintenance. And when you've got, in that case, 10 owners of an HOA, and only five are paying their HOA fees, it becomes a risk. And with my municipal hat on, I think that risk is, if the septic system fails, you're going to have a bunch of property taxpayers calling the Public Works Department and asking for some remedy, and I'm not sure, you know, what I would say if I were the Public Works Director. So, just a point of interest there to think about. Thank you.
Councilor Glenn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to echo other thanks that's been given to all of you for your service to the city, and for stepping up and volunteering your time and effort for, as you can see, a vital part of our city planning, the balance between growth and conservation. So, thank you all for taking the time. I won't comment on the cluster subdivision, because just looking at it for the first time, without going into the details, it looks pretty solid. So, I'll thank you all for your efforts on that. While it's listed under other ongoing projects without a lot of details, I figured, since we have you in front of you, and we are in a very public setting with a council meeting, I'd ask for just some, any more details that any of you might have on two points. The first being the landscaping ordinance, about what discussions have been made in terms of updating the landscaping ordinance, and what ideas that you have. And I'm curious also about the rare and special species series. And my idea behind that is, or at least my thought behind that, is now that we're in a era where you really, where the effects of climate change have become a little bit more pronounced, what was previously native species may be having a little trouble to survive in this new environment, and perhaps what we would consider invasive species might become, shall we say, the oak tree of tomorrow. So, where is the balance between trying to preserve what we've always had versus what will actually grow in this crazy new world that we have? And I'm eager to hear your inputs.
I'll start with the landscaping ordinance, and then I'll hand it off to the commissioners. So, right now, what, what the commission has asked the planning department to do is to vet out the landscaping ordinance as it stands in our zoning today, and in our site plan review chapters. And right now, we have probably not the landscaping standards the city would prefer to see. I know it's definitely not what the commission would prefer to see. So, not only we'll be looking at how we calculate landscaping, how much landscaping you need on a site, because right now, we're really just leaning on parking area, not on total area developed. But we're also looking at how we can help increase the number of native species. We don't want to have 100% native species, or, or we've kind of vetted out concerns about having 100% native species in case there's a disease within the population. You don't want to have, you want to have some biodiversity. But, those are the things we're vetting out, and the commission has given us the direction to move forward with that. And planning staff will be preparing draft considerations with our landscape architect, which is already underway. And so, we're using the landscape architect, who's been working with the city on development reviews for the planning board, and also did a little bit of work very early on, on the ZOR process. And she's come in to speak directly with the Conservation Commission to get their feedback on the current landscaping ordinance, and we've, we've had some discussions about current developments as well. Did I leave anything out?
And we're also working on developing some tree lists and a database of trees that are growing in the Northeast, and being able to use that database based on tree surveys that may be more precise in the future, and then being able to rank the trees based on issues of diversity and things like that. So, that's another large project that Justin and I are working on, so, that connects to the landscape design ordinance.
Yes, and as far as the rare and special species series, did you want more information on it, or to address your concern about change?
A little of both would be nice.
Okay. Yes, I think we mentioned it, but... Yes, I think we mentioned it, but it was kicked off by Melissa, I believe. But we've been trying to share the efforts and write up, there's a list of rare and special species in the area. We pick one, we write something up about it, we find photos that we can properly credit, and then we post them online. We also use it to share with folks that we exist, and if they'd like to be members, you know, sign up. Yeah, as far as the changes in the climate and what that might mean for what is a rare and special species, we haven't really been thinking about that much, to be honest. Invasive species has been on our list of things to consider in the future, but from a very different lens. But yeah, that's a good point. Right now, we're just working off of a list that exists, and we're just trying to showcase some cool things that are here in and around Saco.
And if I can piggyback off Hope for just a second, I've worked pretty closely with Melissa on some of the different posts that we have put out through the Communications Department. And some of the rare and special species are actually rare and special because we as Southern Maine are the top of their habitat range. And further north is not hospitable to them because it becomes too cold, winter lasts too long, all of those things. I will be frank with you, that's not all the species, but that is some of the different types of grasses and trees that we have covered so far in the series. So I cannot guess whether our wetter, warmer climate in the Northeast will positively affect them, but that would require a lot more research.
We will be back with the Climate Adaptation and Action Plan another night, so.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? I am glad to see the collaboration with the Dyer Library on Nomo May, and possibly in the future with the new director, Sophie. I'm sure she would love to have you guys help out with some children's programs maybe, or be able to get your names out there and some recognition on that. Okay, we look forward to the red line version. I think that's all the questions and comments we have. And again, thank you so much for the hard work, guys. We really appreciate it. We'd like to see the comprehensive plan, the LRPC, in conjunction with that as well moving forward and keeping everybody up to date on it. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for coming here and allowing us to speak tonight. We appreciate it.
Okay, the second item this evening under the workshop is the continuation of our calendar of meetings with planning in regards to the zoning and some ordinances. And tonight, we do have discussion on the growth discussion, and we do have Director Prescott with us still.
Thank you. This is really a Part One of what will be a two- or three-part discussion on growth. This is part of the overall land use workshop schedule that we set with you back in June. So what I've handed out in front of you is not only a copy of this PowerPoint presentation so you can follow along, but attached to the back of that is your homework. So I'll go over that with you in just a minute. So a few months ago, we had the Long Range Planning Committee meet with you, and we discussed that they were going to be putting out a reporting tool, and we've been collecting data from different city commissions, departments, staff. We've been going out and talking to a lot of folks about their comprehensive plan implementation strategies, and some general updates we'll have here, and then the workshop schedule going forward. So this is an ongoing project, and as part of our ongoing data collection, we need the city council's help to complete your own reporting tool. So what you have in front of you is a memo here asking you to please complete, and I'm going to ask each counselor if you could take this away. I know you have a lot of work on your plates, but if you could take this away and get it back to the city administrator's office, maybe before October 1st or something, so we can keep this moving along. This directly ties into what your implementation strategy that was assigned to you as the project lead. We did not give you the support topics because we consider city council support for every topic, every strategy. So we really just gave you what you are, a lead. The strategy number is there, so you can look it up directly in the comprehensive plan. The description is there, your timeline we've provided you with. So this is an action item that's supposed to happen within four to six years. I've been telling, we've been telling everyone, don't feel bad if it's not done, just please let us know where it's at so we can see where it's going to fall. The reporting progress, NA, not started, started, in progress, or complete, are the actual checkboxes that our Long Range Planning Committee came up with for their tool, and they vetted this tool that you see in front of you and asked for the planning department to go out and get the information. So I'm not going to go through each one tonight. I see you're already filling it out, so that's great. Thank you. But I just wanted to share that this was what it was, so everyone following along at home can see it on the PowerPoint. We'll make sure that Michelle Beasley has this and can post it after the meeting. But this is basically a condensed version of what you have before you, so everyone's aware of what you're looking at. And again, we won't go line by line tonight. Going forward, thank you for filling that out in advance. If you could please have it back to city administration by October 1st, we would really appreciate it. We also have the land use workshop topics here, and our next one will be ordinance amendments list. We've bumped that up a little bit. It was supposed to be farther out. We've put it in September so that we can follow up on topics and try to get some things closed out, maybe by the end of the year. So if you can please come with your list or send it into city administration, that would be really helpful.
So you would like each counselor to individually do their assessment of how they feel...
Yes.
...which line item is ranked?
It can be handwritten. If you're going to email it, you can also email it to planning@sacoMaine and also to city administration.
Okay, any questions regarding what needs to be done?
Once we have your reporting tool, we will come back and give you a little snapshot of all of the reporting tools with our Long Range Planning Committee's input. So thank you.
Okay, that completes our items for the workshop this evening. We will call the regular meeting to order at 7:27. I would like to make note that all members of the city council are present this evening, including City Administrator Mahenko. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? Item number four this evening is committee correspondence to council. Is there any correspondence? Okay, not seeing any. Moving on to item number five, there is no general this evening. Item number six, public comment. If anyone would like to speak and address council, please step up to the podium, state your name and address, and you will have three minutes.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you, council members. Thomas Donnelly, Levin Gorham, I'm here tonight representing Saco Solar by HEP Solar Development. We are looking at an alternate entrance to the project on Berry Road. And as a Vice President of Development to HEP Solar, I'm here to request your for support for the proposed upgrades to Berry Road, which serve as an alternate access point for the Saco Solar Project HEP USA SPV3 Saco Solar. This project, which has been approved by the planning board and by city council in the past, is now seeking to do this. Over the past six weeks, I've been extensively with residents and landowners on Berry Road. They believe the project will bring significant benefit, not only to their community, but also to the surrounding environment and the local infrastructure. The proposed upgrades, which we are proposing, detailed in the memorandum of understanding, which is in your package, were previously approved by the city council in 2021. These improvements include a 1,337 linear feet of road upgrade, turnaround stormwater management system, and enhancements which are essential for improvement of safety and accessibility to all members in the neighborhood. The letters of support I've received, also in your package, reflect the strong backing from the community, and I'm confident that these upgrades will positively impact both the property values and the quality of life for the residents. This is, in essence, a proposed partnership between the city of Saco and HEP Solar. To execute these upgrades will be mutually beneficial. I respectfully urge the support from the council, as this project and associated improvements you will hear about later on in the package tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Please step forward.
Chelsea Hill, 108 Bradley Street. In the vein of growth in Saco, I'd like to discuss who uses our streets, who are most vulnerable roadway users, how they're accessing shops, attractions, services, schools, nature, parks, rivers, ponds, and beaches. How will they continue to want to access these places in higher and higher numbers as more growth occurs? We have an opportunity in this growth discussion to put the needs of these roadway users at the forefront of your strategic planning and also culture setting in the city. You have an opportunity to explain to your constituents that, reach out to express frustration with traffic, that it might take a few minutes longer to get through downtown because we care about people's safety, and we know that when free-flow speeds are as low as possible, fewer people get in serious crashes, and fewer people are injured and die. Over the next few months, I'm going to come and speak more about how the impact of vehicle speeds and prioritization of vehicle movements over the safety of a community has impacted my life. One such instance is that in 2015, my mother-in-law was killed in a car verse crash, car verse car crash at an intersection in her neighborhood, which had been a four-way intersection for her entire life, 56 years. She lived in southern Louisiana, in a town not too much smaller than Saco. A few weeks before her crash, this intersection that she knew well was changed from a four-way stop to a two-way stop in order to improve the flow of traffic, aka not slow down the traffic on the main line, as the main line had become busier with new growth, people in new neighborhoods and businesses getting to other new neighborhoods and businesses. She approached this intersection just as she had probably every day for her entire life, came to a stop, looked around at each of the approaches, and proceeded to make her right turn onto the main line. This time, she saw a large SUV approaching, but thought, my turn. She turned right and was T-boned in her driver's side door of her Chevy Cruze, and died later from her injuries at the hospital. If we looked at her crash, we could say she made an error and it caused her death. She shouldn't have turned right. And while this is true, it doesn't explain why she made her decision. She made a mistake that she was conditioned to make by a lifetime of driving on the street she was given by her municipality. That municipality made a decision to prioritize the flow of traffic on the new main line road and changed that street, and she died because she made a mistake that didn't align with this desire to make cars flow faster. Over the weekend, I was contacted to help lead a bike bus to C.K. Burns in the comment section of a post complaining about the long drop-off lines at the school on Facebook. I picked up one girl from her house this morning on the bike bus, and another family met us at Fairfield in Maine. We just eliminated three cars from the drop-off line. On our way, we met another family riding bikes, another car eliminated, and on my way home, I saw two other kids riding bikes to school by themselves, two more cars eliminated. We hope that there is strength in numbers to help reduce the number of car trips by continuing to ride our bikes on the bike bus. I'm almost finished. When you talk to constituents and traffic frustrations inevitably bubble up, remember that you have an opportunity to plug that everyone has a right to use our streets. And Saco wants everyone to know that they belong here. Advocate for slowing down and following speed limits. And when changes to city code present themselves, to make positive changes to slow down or result in a net increase to street safety. Remember that you will never be told how many lives you've saved from serious injuries or death because we can't count what doesn't happen.
Thank you, Chelsea. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, not seeing anyone seeking recognition. We move on to item seven, and that is the action items this evening. We have already completed action item one, which had moved to the top of the agenda. Takes us now to item B, which is one reading of the fiscal year 2025 budget wage line transfer, and that is Counsel Archer.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Plans are appropriated into payroll contingency as part of the fiscal year 2025 budget process. This amendment quickly redistributes the increase of $129,917 to the individual paid lines. Be it ordered that city council approves fiscal year 2025 wage line transfer for PW Union employees, I move to approve the order.
Motion has been made by Counsel Archer. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Gunn. Any discussion? Okay, not seeing any. Roll call vote. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counsel Parks?
Yes.
Counsel Gunn?
Yes.
Counsel Berman?
Yes.
Counsel Hatch?
Yes.
Counsel Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counsel Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Okay, item number C this evening is the ratification of the parking lot lease for Zero Good Street, which is 142 Main Street, and that is Counsel Archer.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just bringing it up. October 24, 2023, the city of Saco purchased Zero Good Street, known as 142 Main Street parking lot from BSG Properties LLC, in the amount of $450,000 for the purpose of extra parking for the downtown as well as the transportation center. As an obligation to contract zones with River House Realty LLC, 20 parking spaces must remain available for the tenants at 146 Main Street. On December 29, 2023, the city entered into a lease agreement with River House Realty LLC for 20 designated parking spaces in the amount of 1,000 per month. Be it ordered that city council ratify the terms of the lease agreement with the River House Realty LLC dated December 29, 2023, for 20 designated parking spaces at 142 Main Street, I move to approve the order.
Second.
Motion has been made by Counsel Archer, second by Counsel Johnson. Any discussion? Okay, not seeing any. Roll call vote. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counsel Parks?
Yes.
Counsel Gunn?
Yes.
Counsel Berman?
Yes.
Counsel Hatch?
Yes.
Counsel Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counsel Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Okay, that now takes us to item D, and that is a public hearing for the Chapter 166, Public Spaces and Parks, and that is Counsel Johnson.
Staff has compiled a new draft ordinance, Chapter 166, Public Spaces and Parks. Draft ordinance has been reviewed by City Solicitor Tim Murphy. I move to open the public hearing.
Okay, there's been motion made to open the public hearing by Counsel Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Hatch. Any discussion on opening the public hearing? Okay, roll call vote. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counsel Parks?
Yes.
Counsel Gunn?
Yes.
Counsel Berman?
Yes.
Counsel Hatch?
Yes.
Counsel Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counsel Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Public hearing is now open. If there is anyone who would like to speak and address the council, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Okay, we're not seeing anyone being recognized. Counsel Johnson?
Move to close the public hearing and schedule the second and final reading for September 16, 2024.
Motion has been made by Counsel Johnson to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Berman. Roll call vote. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counsel Parks?
Yes.
Counsel Gunn?
Yes.
Counsel Berman?
Yes.
Counsel Hatch?
Yes.
Counsel Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counsel Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Close the public hearing. Okay, that now takes us to item E, and that is another public hearing for the parking plan and fee schedule changes for 142 Main Street Parking Lot, and that is Counselor Johnston.
Got it in front of them?
Page 17. I'm sorry, yeah, page 17.
In September 2023, the city purchased the downtown parcel for expansion of public parking opportunities for shopping, dining, and public transportation access. A portion of this lot is leased to the budding apartment complex for tenant parking. Remaining space or spaces shall be designated for short or long-term parking and free or paid parking areas as determined by the City Council. I move to open the public hearing.
Motion has been made to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Any discussion on opening the public hearing? Okay, roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Any members of the public wishing to speak, please step up to the podium and state your name and address. Okay, not seeing anyone seeking recognition. Counselor Johnston?
Move to close the public hearing and schedule the second final reading for September 16, 2024.
Motion has been made by Counselor Johnston. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to close the pass, public hearing passes seven zero. Okay, that now takes us to item eight this evening, and that is new business. We do have three items. Item A tonight is the amendment to remote, excuse me, amendment to remote participation in meetings policy. And City Administrator, who is presenting that?
That would be Ms. Johnson.
Yeah, yeah, where it's new business. Are we getting a quick update?
Do you want me to read it?
No, because it's new business, so there's no motion to it.
Good evening. So in the packet, you'll see a draft policy based on the feedback from the last meeting. We ended up just putting into the packet a clean copy of the edits because we made quite a few changes to make sure that we best responded to those needs. So during the meeting, our understanding from that conversation is summarized in the document here, but a few things to point out. The hybrid option in this draft policy would be available to all boards and committees in the city. So this would respond to the council desire for the council and planning board to be able to conduct their meetings should they meet the criteria, and should the mayor authorize them to do so, then would be able to hold the hybrid meetings in this space as their normal meetings are held here. But other boards and committees would also be able to use this space to conduct a hybrid meeting should they be able to follow the standard process, the rooms available, the staffs available. But it sounded like there was council support for making sure that that option would be available to other boards and committees should they choose to do so and be authorized to do so. And then we added the mayor's discretion criteria that had been brought forward to expand the different options for when you can pivot to either a remote or a hybrid meeting. And then we also included some additional amendments to Section C and Section D and Section E, which is why I said we ended up just giving you a clean copy to make sure everything tied out properly with all the changes. And then lastly, we did include a training element, just because it is complex moderating a meeting both in person and remotely to be able to accomplish that hybrid model. So with the staff liaison, the chairperson, the mayor, deputy mayor, we just wanted to make sure everybody is properly trained in utilizing the system before we actually pivot to a hybrid meeting. So I believe we were able to respond to all of the comments and incorporate those herein, but if there are any additional amendments or any changes that you would like to make, then please do so.
Any comments, questions for Emily? Counselor Archer?
Yeah, I'm just trying to, I was looking at this, I was trying to remember the consensus. I believe the consensus, again, we didn't vote by any means, but I thought we were just going to limit it to council and planning board. And I thought there was general consensus to not include all boards. This is clearly not what I recall.
So our understanding was that while currently the boards that can actually pivot and meet the criteria right now are the council and planning board, however, it did seem like there was interest in making sure that we continue to find ways to support other boards and committees. So we wrote it in a way that would allow those boards to do that should they meet the conditions.
Counselor Berman?
Maybe just following on Counselor Archer for a second. My concerns were really about staff and resource time. Should all committees need to do a hybrid option, you know, there needs to be, we said, learned it's more than just pushing a button and the staff time involved. So while there may be some emergent situations where other committees would need to do so, my intent was for the regular course of business, planning board and council would be the two that would be regularly hybrid.
And weren't we correct in if the other boards and committees were going to be allowed to then create their own policy, if they were permitted to use the model?
There was feedback that there wasn't interest in moving forward with individual boards making that determination. So again, that's where, as it stands today, the only boards that regularly meet in the space where the technology is available are the two that you've mentioned. But this policy obviously can be amended to incorporate whatever direction the council would like to move in. But where there wasn't a formal vote, you know, it's unclear to determine consensus. But this is your policy, so if you would like to amend it to reflect that, then we're happy to incorporate that in the document.
We could do a quick show of hands for consensus.
Yeah, probably that'd be a good idea.
Yep, I think if that, if you want to, how would you like to word that?
What we can, if the interest is to move forward with only making this option available to the city council and the planning board, then we will provide a draft policy that reflects that for your consideration for the regular business item.
So if you would like to have the policy be for city council, planning board only, raise your hand yes.
It's a vote. And so, I mean, I think what has been indicated makes sense. This as-is can be presented, and then council can certainly amend it with some assistance from city staff.
Coming in as new business right now is our quick option if something in there
I know, I'm just saying that.
that council didn't want to see going forward.
It was just a formal vote in a non-voting setting. That's all I'm getting at.
Excuse me, Your Honor.
Yes.
I think we got the picture. So the next time you see this, you will have that adjustment.
Yep. Counselor Gunn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Emily. I was gonna say, going over this, the one thing that was not reflected, and I know that there was, I can't recall if there was pushback or whatever in terms of the cost involved though, but if we were to make this policy available to all boards, committees, and commissions, I raised the issue that a lot of the boards and committees and commissions would not function, in my personal judgment, in a practical way that's conducive to doing their business if they were to use the dais for the simple reason that there's a lot of committees that work better in an informal setting around a table that can be, it's more conducive to back-and-forth communication, let alone people from the public coming to offer information and informal things as opposed to this dais, though, which can be intimidating to the layperson and is not, and by our own rules and standards, though, we address the mayor, not even each other. So as you can see, it's not even set up to even have practical discussion amongst each other, because that's not the purpose of this room or our rules and conditions. Now, obviously, the boards, committees, and commissions don't follow those standards, but just whether it's the acoustics, whether it's the setup, if we could modify perhaps that new room that we have over at Public Works or the downstairs room, so it would be applicable to being able to hold a hybrid meeting, I know that costs money, so let's not go there. But if it's physically possible, that's something that we should pursue as a policy to make this a practical choice for all the committees that would be interested in it until that day comes. Hence, my support for only making this for the city council and the planning board, because I don't think this room, this setup, is appropriate for any of the other boards and committees. And that's how I feel about that. And if that can be reflected in this, or if it needs to be, I'll leave that up to judgment of the staff. Thank you.
So where it stands right now, if we amend this policy to only apply to the council and planning board, we would just want to account for, if you'd like, that option for remote meetings to be available to the other boards and committees, because right now it's all encompassed in a single policy. And should the council wish to look at adding the capability to provide a hybrid meeting space in other locations, then we'll just need that directive through the city administrator for us to research that, get proposals, so we can bring that back for consideration.
So if I might, so what we'll do for making these amendments, we will be looking at allowing only the city council and planning board, as the city council has discussed. And during our budget process, if it's okay, we'll take a look at what the cost would be to make the DPW available and outfitted for that type of option. So we will, this won't come back until the, that part, Counselor, won't come back until the budget time.
Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. I'm going to personalize an example here, just so I'm clear in my head. If I, as a counselor, am not going to be able to physically attend a meeting, but would like to participate, I'm going to have to move a request through the mayor, who will evaluate my request based on the four items you have listed under Section B scope. And if she grants that privilege of converting to hybrid, I'm a little concerned about the meeting notification provision. I'm going to have to be very proac, I'm just thinking aloud here, I'm going to have to be very proactive with my schedule. And it eliminates the, I think it eliminates the opportunity for like a last minute. Maybe I come down with COVID, but I, I'm well enough to participate, but I don't want to come to the chambers and infect anybody. I'm probably going to have a problem getting that orchestrated. So I just throw that out for consideration. I know that many of us complain our schedules ahead of time, but there are always those emergency situations. And I'm not suggesting I don't have any answer on how to deal with it, but that meeting notification component.
How long does it take to, if I get notification of a counselor that they can attend, if, again, like I said, if somebody's gotten sick last minute or a family member is ill, they can still attend the meeting but not in person, how much notice would you need to set that up?
So we, the policy that's identified right now is 24 hours' notice, as reflected in the council rules in Order of Business. So there are also other noticing requirements to make, so the public has to be aware of how they can participate in advance so that they can plan accordingly, because whatever is available to the members of the board has to be available to the public. So as much notice as possible is always helpful from a staffing perspective, so we can make sure we get information out, that everybody's aware of any change, and that the equipment and technology is ready to deploy that option. But in terms of the noticing requirements, I don't have that, the actual statute in front of me, but we can take a look at that.
City Administrator?
I'll defer to.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, my intent of this policy would be that city council meetings would always be hybrid, to allow the public to weigh in all the time, so that noticing wouldn't be required for that. Whether a counselor or board member should be absent, should follow that four-stage policy, as Counselor Hatch outlined. But part of the intent of the hybrid policy is not for the seven or eight of us, it's also so the public can weigh in from home. So my intent is that planning board and council meetings would always be hybrid, and that way the public can weigh in and participate from Zoom or whatever the tool is. And if a counselor or board member needed to be absent, then they would notice the mayor, that four-stage criteria would apply, and at the mayor's discretion, they could be granted permission to use that system in order to participate. But if the hybrid meetings come and go for the planning board or council, it loses the advantage, because the public won't know in advance whether they can weigh in or not. So I would like those two meetings to always be hybrid, is, I think, the benefit.
I would agree.
Counselor Johnston?
I'm just agreeing. That was my original intent.
Counselor Archer?
Yeah, I was just, I was raising my hand for the same content. I think we're trying, we're not trying to, but I think we're making it overly complicated when it doesn't have to be. Remote emergency connected to, why are we remote if we have a hybrid setting? It's because we can't come to this location. So remote should always be from the emergency perspective, that we can't make it COVID, virus, something like that. Hybrid is our standing operating procedure. That is kind of how I looked at it, so that there would be no confusing, there would be no notification. It would just be the standard for both the planning, the two very impactful councils and committees that we have, that the citizens will always have the ability to. I think, again, I made this comment, that it should be more simple than it is. We are somehow making it more difficult. I thought of it always as just, it is a new way of business. Then you would never have these discussions. And in reality, do you need a four-step process? If we have hybrid, a counselor says, "I need to just be remote," it should be within their discretion. Their people chose them to represent them. If that person believes that they need to not be there, but they still want to contribute, it should be up to them to make that decision. If it's habitual, then I believe it's up to the council, and America, you have the ability to, you pull off a person to a side and say, "Hey, any type of ethics or any type of problems, the mayor is to set aside along with the council when we have issues." I think we need to police ourselves on this, not by policy. We know when someone's abusing it, and we'll have a conversation at that time. But this should just be simple. Hybrid, remote is emergency, and separate the two. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? City Administrator?
Sure. I think we understand what is being said. So I would ask that, we'll bring this back if it's no objection in October. And it would be my thought, and if we do bring it back, and if the council votes that there is hybrid all the time for every meeting, my recommendation will be to start it after the first of the year. That's kind of the way I would do it, so that we make sure that everything's lined up, that we have a date that gives everybody the appropriate landing to get to that particular item of hybrid. And as Counselor Archer said, and Counselor Berman, the remote possibility for council members will still have to go through the mayor to determine if it reads the criteria of that. So there really, you're correct, there are really two things we're talking about here. So we will bring this back in October, and with the idea that if the council wants to and votes to, we will establish it for January 1, 2025. Does that seem reasonable?
Okay.
Thank you, Emily.
Anyone else? That's it. Thank you. Okay, that now takes us to item B. First off, Counselor Johnston, you are the liaison to that. Are you okay? Good, all right. Okay, item B tonight is the request for city council's review of the Berry Road review of the Berry Road consideration. And we have Director Prescott with us.
Thank you. There's been many years of discussion on Berry Road, so I won't go into the long history that many of you already know. We've provided links to the 2021 materials. I trust you read most of those. We also heard earlier during public comment from the requister who's brought this forward. So he's available, Tom Donnelly, in the room. If you want to talk with him directly, certainly feel free to call him up. This was brought forward to me. City engineer also took a look at the concept. We really only have what we've received so far, as well as code enforcement has been involved in discussions, too. So what we're looking to get from City Council is a general feedback on whether or not we should be continuing to move forward with this proposal and bringing forward a one-reading process for the MOU as a revived version of the 2021 document. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Counsel Johnson?
Thank you. I have comments, and they're really directed at council. I mean, I can see, as I have, I mean, I think I've had, I've seen at least three variations of some similar agreement during my time here. But I'll, I can see why it's desirable to the current proposed applicant, and see why certain parcel owners on that section of the Berry Road may be interested in this. But I will just reiterate my concerns I had back in 2021, which really is based solely around process and principles here that govern council. So first of all, if you look at that document, as I said in 2021, it will not support any documentation that, you know, states, as it does, unless we're ordered by a court of law, that implies a future elected body, a future council, will be or act favorably based on a past council's desire. That's clear to everybody. That, my viewpoint, essentially is hand-strung, handicapping, handcuffing a council to make a decision based on the ordinance that they are to uphold. That's solely council's decision when it comes to street acceptance. The language here, again, implies that a city council will accept this street. That's not for me to decide, that's for a future council to decide. When I, I look at the language of unreasonably withhold, well, what is unreasonably? That, each one of us can decide what is reasonable or unreasonable, it's not clear. And so just on the principle of that, and caring about the role all of us were sworn to uphold, I take exception with it, as I did in 2021. Additionally, again, I go back, that's a precedent setting in that, in that act. You know, so, again, the additions, or the additional issues I have, as I laid out previously, we have standards and ordinance that are clear about what is acceptable. Yet this document does not meet those standards in several of our documents. So we have the technical design standards, lays out a road of 50 foot wide as a minimum, is what an acceptable road is. Forty-nine and a half feet, I get it, it's six inches, but why do we have a standard then? You know, it's six inches this time, it's a foot next time, it's two feet. Why have it at all then? You know, additionally, we have standards in Chapter 186 that, again, reiterates the fact that a road has to be 50 feet, no street or way, less than 50 feet wide shall be laid out and accepted by the City of Saco as a public street. Here we are, agreeing, which, again, I go back to 2021, as I said it, and I never got a legal opinion. I have my own separate that I saw as an individual that, and again, I understand that, you know, attorneys, they're in the business of giving you legal opinions, but I don't think council has legal authority to actually enter into this and state that you're going to violate your own ordinances. Now, would someone have to challenge you in court? Of course. But the ordinances on the book, books are what they are. This is an attempt to solve a long issue, long-drawn-out issue, there's many reasons it exists the way it does, but I'm not comfortable, and I will probably never be comfortable, going against the ordinances. As a resident, a butter on this road once said to me, oh, you're the city council, you can do whatever the hell you want. Well, then maybe that's what you do. And I'm not advocating for it, but I'm saying, if you're going to do it, then just change all the ordinances to make it so that this matches, versus going into some MOU that has no date or timeline, again, an issue I had back in 2021. It's been four years almost, and the prior applicant did not act. And here we are again, new applicant, nothing against that applicant, but we're trying to solve their problem when we are to act in the best interest of the city Saco for all of Saco residents. This is a dead-end street, another violation. You're not allowed to have a city road that's longer than 1,000 feet. So we're going to knowingly sit here, or in the future, and enter into an agreement that says, well, we don't really follow those ordinances. I get the reasons for it, but it's a tough pill for me to swallow, because I don't understand how you uphold other ordinances in the future when, because there are other examples throughout Saco, and there will be in the future, that have, you know, similar situations, or potentially similar situations, where, you know, the ordinance doesn't work for that individual applicant. And then just as a side note, which, you know, it's not addressed because it's not necessarily tied in, but I do think it's a question for council. If you would move forward with this, and you make this a public road, you are now making or accessing hundreds of acres for residential development that's not accessible to the degree it would be today, right? That's a question for council. Do you want to see that type of growth out there? Because I can assure you, once the road's in place and they have the frontage on a public way, the zoning change that has already been floated previously during the ZORIS process to get greater density out this way will come. And it goes back to that question of sprawl. Only the people that live on the Berry Road travel on the Berry Road, or unless, you know, in a rare instance, or a rare case, no acquaintance of maybe the less than 100 homes out there. But the average person is not traveling the Berry Road. It's a non-through streets, a 2,000-plus-long dead end. Again, we have an ordinance because we, honestly, specifically to roads like the Berry Road, we weren't looking to have long roads that are not through streets. So I guess that's my point with it. And like I said, I expressed those issues back then. I did vote no. New council, I get that, but for me, nothing has changed with regards to the fact that it's not in compliance with other ordinances. Thank you.
Did you want to address any of those concerns?
Your Honor, I don't know, really, that's probably more as for the legal counsel to address. I don't want to have Director Prescott have to opine to anything such as that.
Could I, just as a follow-up, as a question?
Yep.
Because I never got this answer in 2021.
Yes.
We're talking six inches. Why can't this be a 50-foot right-of-way as the ordinance requires? That solves at least a portion of, of my issue with it, but, like I said, so if that can be explained, why we can't get the full 50-foot right-of-way, that would be appreciative.
Sure, I, I think we can probably give you a response to that.
And for the new counselors who were not here during that time, just so that you do know, half of the road already is a city road. This is completing the second half of the road.
Which was abandoned.
Right. There was a turnoff because there is a turnaround at the end of the side street that the buses and the plows are able to do. There's a full hammerhead that's anticipated of being with a bus turn. So half of the road already is an accepted road.
Right. And the other half was abandoned because it did not meet the standards.
Correct. And this is trying to bring it up to standard.
But it doesn't meet the standards, and that's my point. If we're going to bring it up to the standards, bring it up to the actual standard, just as every other developer in the City of Saco that has built a road has been forced to do. To do otherwise, you are allowing or creating a situation where a future developer will say, well, why did they get it this way? And it's hard to argue that point, against that point.
Your Honor, we will look into that, and we'll get an answer for Counsel Johnson, and when we bring it back to the City Council in the future. Does that seem okay with everybody?
Does anyone else have any questions regarding it? Okay, not seeing any.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that now takes us to Item C. And that is a request to add commercial solar energy system electrical permit application fee to the city's fee schedule. That is Director Jimmy.
Good evening. We had a solar farm come into town, get approved and built. They asked for electrical permit, and alls we have on our fee schedule is accessory, solar panels typically on roofs, or maybe a small field. So we charged them that fee. They requested that we change our fees. They did some research from surrounding towns and came back with what they thought was a good fee. We now charge $7 a panel. We told them we could probably work and justify three to five. My electrical inspector, who did all the inspections out there, would request $5 a panel. They were hoping for $4 a panel. But it's up to you to make the final decision. But I would say that it is, takes a lot more inspections to do a solar farm than it does one on a roof. So you make the final decisions. They want four, we recommend five. You can go anywhere from zero to seven, because that's what they are paying today. So it's your decision.
If I might just add that they have paid the full $7 per panel.
Yes, they have.
So the money is there for them to continue their project. It's not holding anything up at this point. So we certainly have this that we can bring back to the City Council for a motion to, to create this adjustment, so that we actually have a fee identified as solar farm rather than residential.
Counsel Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess, you know, we need and deba fee cover the cost of the inspection in the city. The amount, you know, weighs, you know, encouraging more solar development here in Saco versus somewhere else, against our, our costs that it actually take to inspect it. And I guess I'd be curious about more information about that when, when it comes back. What is the actual cost of inspecting? How much time does it take? And what, how does that differ by size of project? And what level of inspection fee would actually cover our costs? Would help provide me some information to make that decision.
This is the first one we inspected, and I believe our inspector was out there every day.
So, Your Honor, if, if it's okay with the council, can we bring our inspector up just to give a little briefing?
Yep.
Just so they get a little feel for what he has to go through?
Yep.
Marcel?
Thank you, David. Hi there. My name is Marcel DeRosa, electrical inspector. Been here for 25 years. So a solar farm is quite intensive as far as it comes to inspections. From the day they break ground to the day they finish, we are there every day, sometimes twice a day, and I have been there actually on Saturdays, so they can continue their work. One of the problems we face with the solar fields is that the state of Maine has had a lot of solar fields. And recently, in an electrical examiner board hearing, the senior state inspector had come back and said that there have been numerous fires and explosions in these solar fields due to lack of inspection, lack of time, which is why we spent, we spent a lot of time to make sure that every, no screw was left unturned. I mean, every, we dotted our i's and crossed our t's. And to give you an example, they have like, when these guys command, they come in with like 60 people, and there's a lot of hands in the pie, and this guy's doing some of this. So I literally go through almost every connection. Of the first 12 combiner boxes found, which have 1,200 volts, 12 failed. Loose grounds, improper wiring connections, and so on. That's why I spent so much time there, was to avoid the problems that the state has been finding, that they have been having throughout the state. So yeah, as far as the time concerned, it's at least an hour to an hour and a half every morning, and up to an hour every afternoon, for the whole time they're here. And that's been, what, four months, five months, including Saturdays. There have been several Saturdays that they have called me in because they wanted to continue, and they wanted to bury conduit. And I do not feel comfortable letting them bury 14,000 volts without seeing the conduit myself to make sure it's proper depth and proper everything for the citizens of Saco. So that's why, tremendous amount of time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That answer your question, Mike?
And I'd like to add, that did not include the time to review the plans and research any questions they had of Marcel during the process, which they had many questions.
It is a suggestion for the, for the $5 a panel, is it the opinion of the department that that would cover the costs more or less?
Yes, it would.
Counsel Archer?
Yes, and thank you, Counsel Berman, for asking about the five covering the cost. When I see large projects like this, yes, it's important to cover the cost, but what you're effectively doing is pulling your staff away from other projects as well. $7 was market value. I don't, that's what I just heard, was market value. I say we stay market value, recognizing, yes, we do not have to break even on everything that we do. And if you're going to pull significant amount of time from, like, an office, we should have that couple extra dollars built in there, because it sounds like Saturday, I hope that's not overtime, don't answer the question, but overtime's expensive. So if $5 just covers the cost, overtime is not covering that cost. And again, I don't know if it applies to this process, but we have to consider that when we're talking about budgets. So I'm comfortable with market rate, whatever that is. Lower than market rate encourages this type of development, which is, is that what we want? Is that not what we want? Do we want to turn all our farmland into a commercial solar panel system or not? I say just go market rate and let, let developers decide if it's a good fit for them or not. But yeah, from what I'm hearing, especially pulling these large projects, if we had two or three of these, we'd probably need this hundred-something thousand per project just to hire more staff temporarily for your office, so that we can still get other projects done in the city. So I think because it's such a large commitment of staff time that we go market rate, I don't see four or five as sufficient to meet the needs of our community. Thank you.
Counsel Johnson?
Yeah, Counsel Archer took the words right out of my mouth. That's where I was thinking with this. I mean, this is all new to us, right? This is the first solar farm. I think anybody that's driven out on Route 5 has seen what a large project it is. Obviously, as we've heard, it's a lot of staff time. But to Counsel Archer's point, the minute I thought of that, I also, having, you know, several people, you know, that I know that are either waiting permits, whether it's City of Saco or surrounding districts, it's hard right now just to get staff time, because there's not enough of them to go around. So recouping the cost is always nice, but it's also the fact that there are other, you know, even just small permits that lie waiting in the wings when our electrical inspector or other inspectors are, are busy with this type of project. So I'm comfortable staying as is too. Thank you.
Counsel Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. To, in the purpose of building consensus here, I'm going to hang my hat on the $7 level as well. I agree with all the comments that were made. I would rather make that happen for us, and if we need to consider a reduction at some future point as we gain more experience, I'm happy to reconsider that. So I'm going to be supportive of staying at the $7 level.
Anyone else? Questions or comments?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Reading the, the, the City Council, I mean, we can put this on hold and see how this project goes forward, and see how many hours we have in there, and have a better understanding of the time. I think you heard from our electrical inspector on the intensity of these types of projects. So unless I hear an objection, I think what we'll do is work with this company to do the inspections, to determine if the rate is appropriate at the $7. And once we have that data in, we can come back to the City Council and and give you more empirical evidence as to, is it $7 or is it more $5? Because, of course, the theory, getting this revenue is to reimburse the city for time spent. It's not necessarily to just generate income. So I think what we need to do is take a look at this project. I know that we will. And I think as we go through this, we'll have our electrical inspector to document his time, which I'm sure he has. And we'll talk to the Director Tumi about what, at the end of this project, was the intensity, and we'll have some data at least to go by. So they have paid their permit at the $7, so they are moving forward. So unless I hear an objection, I think we'll proceed that way.
Any objection to that? Counselor Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Not necessarily objection, just more data collection of my own. What other properties do we have that possibly would be needing these permits in the near future? Because if we don't determine a rate at this moment, they can just throw at any number they want or use the res... Well, they can't really use residential because it's not residential. I actually appreciate, I'm sorry, I just switched my screens, the current discussion company for paying the $7 as it is market rate. But we do kind of have to provide something for now. Because then I'm just thinking, I mean, we just were talking about the Berry Road. We know that there's future coming down the road. If we don't make a decision now, they may just say zero. And I'm not going to pay you anything unless I'll sue you.
Then they won't get it, yeah, well.
So I think it's just better to do the $7. This is a one-motion type of ordinance, correct? A fee change?
I do hear that, so I'm not... Go ahead, I think that Director Prescott.
Just for clarity, it would require a public hearing to do this fee change for Section 87 of the code.
Add two, at least two.
My purpose of asking if there was any objection is to see if we want to spend more time on it. I can bring this back if it's up for the council to bring it back again as we get more data. I'll bring it back. Is it okay to bring it back in October? I think I'll have the data by then, and we should probably have a better understanding. So we'll aim for October, and we will charge the $7 per panel.
Counselor Johnson is...
Yeah, no, I was just thinking, again, same.
Wasn't sure if it was just up or if it was...
Counselor Archer, in the sense that there's two issues. The first being that the current ordinance doesn't actually designate a fee for the commercial. So to Counsel Archer's point, you could have a developer say, "I'm not paying that because it's not in your ordinance." So I do think you need to memorialize something in the ordinance.
So I understand, and I think what we'll do to make this reasonable in terms of getting some information, we'll probably bring it back first part of October, okay? Which is two meetings from now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that now takes us to item number nine tonight, and that is the administrative update. City Administrator Mayhane, go.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just want to notice an RFP, Boom Road Culver Replacement Project. And Public Works is advertising the Boom Road Culver Replacement Project closing on Wednesday, September 25 at 1:00 p.m. Please visit saco.org for additional information. The other thing that I'm very happy to report is that we are moving forward on the facilities consolidation. As you recall, a couple of months ago, Superintendent Jeremy Ray approached me about combining the school and city facilities department. During a joint meeting with the school board, this matter was introduced and was received favorably by both the city council and the school board. Subsequent to the meeting, I started to work with Superintendent Ray, Human Resources, and Don Roth, the city facilities, to implement this proposal. I'm pleased to advise you, have completed our consolidation. I have appointed Don Roth as Director of Facilities effective September 3, 2024. Don is in the process of reviewing the necessary resources he will need to effectively do the job. And the way we will be proceeding on this is that the school department will view us as a vendor. We will be billing the school department so that Director Roth will have the ability to put together what he feels is the type of staff he needs. It won't be as there, it will be more or less under his control. And so that he will be meeting with Superintendent and myself on, I think we're going to probably do, probably every month or so to just make sure things are going fine. And I'm very pleased that Director Roth wanted to go forward with this. And I'm looking forward to, as I said, we're not going to save a lot of money. What we're going to do is put processes in place so that when we have a new school, we will be right on top of making sure that we are looking at all the equipment, all the HVAC, all the types of things that go into a building now which are somewhat complicated, more so than many years prior. So when you're right on the ground floor and start working right at the beginning, I think we'll have a good opportunity to continue the useful life of these schools for many years.
Any questions or comments? Is that it?
And then, just the Army Corps, I did another update on that. So people will be seeing activity out there. Also, there's a little item relative to this fire sprinklers, stop fire from growing at a local behavioral health facility. So you can read about that. And again, I'm pleased to introduce Jennifer Henderson, who will be our new finance controller. She joins the city of Saco with a strong background in accounting, financial document review, and process improvement. Jennifer holds a master's degree in accountancy from the University of Texas at San Antonio. So I'm pleased to present this report and answer any questions the council may have.
Any questions or comments for the city administrator? Okay, not seeing any. Moving on to item 10, and that is council discussion and comment. Any councilors wishing to speak? Counselor Johnson?
Thank you. Good, several quick items. First one, just request at some point on financial update on the ARPA funds, wherever we're at with that. Then just a reminder that, to my knowledge, we still have an open planning board appointment. Curious where we are with that.
Yes.
Do we have any potential applicants?
I have one that I'm trying to set up a time to speak with her, and there is one that I am trying to reach out with to set up a time as well.
And then, lastly, and, oh, there we go, code's still in the room. It's just kind of an ongoing problem, but I certainly, unless my eyes are playing tricks on me, which they may, I'm fairly certain, driving down the Portland Road yesterday or Saturday, I happened to notice a building, property, that was advertising that they are a marijuana medical dispensary on the Portland Road. I don't believe that meets the zoning. I know that some of us councilors in the past, I brought this up at various times. So I'm just throwing that out there, that somebody from the city may want to go check out 958 Portland Road. It's also advertised online as a medical dispensary. And like I said, I could be wrong. I did recheck the zoning ordinance, but I'm fairly certain that's not an approved use. And I do know that the planning board and council has had discussion about potentially making that a use, but we, to my knowledge, have not. So I'd like that corrected.
Director Tumi?
Did you say 958?
Yes.
That just was sold, and the new buyers reached out just today. And we told them marijuana is not allowed out there, and they will not be...
They have a large sign right now.
Yeah, yes.
It will be gone.
It will be gone.
Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Appreciate that information.
That's it for today. Thank you. Counselor Berman?
Yeah, just a friendly request, maybe to Communications. On the city webpage, under Administration, Projects, Camp Ellis, Section 111, there used to be periodic updates about the status of the Army Corps project. Looks like the last one might have been in 2020. And just as the project moves forward, if additional information could get added to that site, that'd be pretty helpful for the residents.
I will add this because I think we are going to start getting information from our contact. And so this is the first of many. So I will talk to the Communications Department.
Counsel Archer?
Yes, I just want to bring up a moment to just, Laura Ellis reached out to us all about the LPC Legislative Policy Committee about July. I mentioned if you wanted to be elected to it. It's now an appointment now, and if you have any questions about it. Saco, I mean, you get one for the Senate district, and it's been me since, it'd be seven years now? I did not rerun, just knowing that my time here on council will be coming to an end. It's now an appointment now, so it's very simple. So I almost feel like it's the first come, first served at the moment. But it's a great way to learn about what's going on, what the state is trying to do that affects municipalities. And it's effectively a committee that votes at the LPC, and they vote for or against current, effectively lobbyists. It gives direction to the lobbyist of Maine Municipal Association, which we are a member of, and that's why I believe we have access to. So if you have any questions, I mean, it can go to anybody in the Senate district, but it's always good to have Saco representation, I would say.
Just so everybody knows, all the meetings are Zoom. And they have two or three, I think.
Yeah, they meet mostly during legislative session, and then it goes very dark for a while. And then the first session is more impactful because that's where all the, most of the policies are coming from. And then the second legislation, the next year, is mostly about billing, budget, and emergency items. So it's not as, the commitment is very reasonable, is how I should say.
And we're going to confirm the time to make sure if it was a day meeting.
They are.
It is during the day, and it's two to four. It can be significant. If you're on subcommittees, they meet first, and the whole committee will meet. But it's a great way to learn. I was glad that when I was first appointed and then kept on being elected by our council and the others, I've been very appreciative, and I've learned a lot from it. So it's a great way to grow, understand how the state and the municipality interact, or sometimes don't interact. This is where I've given pushback on voting on non-funded mandates a few times, myself. But again, they take the consensus of the group, and then the lobbyists will advocate for, against, or neither for nor against. So those are their three options. Thank you.
Thank you for throwing that out. I was actually going to follow up with you after, so I had information to put it out. So if anybody is interested, let the city administrator or myself know, and we can reach out and get the appointment process going. Hey, anyone else? Counsel again.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was wondering if the city website and our presence on social media, if they haven't already, can be sure that Saco citizens are aware of this ceremony that we, as councilors and the mayor, have been elected to, have been invited to next week from Bedford Cultural and Heller Heritage Center as part of their welcoming week over in Mechanics Park, a ceremony that's going to be held on Tuesday, September 17, at 3:30 in the afternoon. I was hoping that we have people from Saco as well, not only just us, though, but any citizens because it's part of our collective heritage. I obviously don't know too much about the story aside from what I've read. By diving into it, it's one of our, I think, more prouder chapters. And I think definitely should be encourage the biggest crowd as we possibly can for something of this nature. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, not seeing anyone. And that will take us now to an adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman. We'll call a vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn passes at 8:32. And thank you, everyone, and have a great evening.